All right, good morning, everybody. I call it an order to schedule a Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, August 15th, and ask if everyone would please join the Board as we honor America with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you again, and good morning. Now is public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on today's agenda or anything else you want to comment on. Anybody wishing to do so, come right up to the microphone right here. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to agency reports, and we're pleased to have our friends from Herta here today. Julia Brooke, come on up. Start by introducing yourself, please.
Hello, thank you for having us. I'm Julia Castillo, I'm the Executive Director of Herta.
I'm Brooke Ramsey, and I'm the Business Development Manager at Herta.
So what we wanted to do today was just to kind of give you some stats and what's been happening at our offices lately. So we just finalized our fiscal year 2017 stats, and in Story County, we did 47,000 rides, we operated 297,000 miles, and we had 19,000 service hours for our drivers, so we are pleased with that. Asset funded rides came in at 4,771, so that's good as well. Some new services that we are going to be rolling out in September, which is going to be really good for the community, we're starting our Herta Now program here in Ames, and that is same-day service is on-demand, so you call and you will get a ride. You don't have to wait the typical 24 hours for that. It does cost $5 instead of the $2, but it was something that had been asked for in the community, and so we started it in Newton, and now we're moving it also into Ames, and we think that it'll be successful, so we're excited about that. We are starting weekly trips to Iowa City. We have been doing them monthly, but there does seem to be more of a need, so we will be going every Tuesday. And then we are resuming our weekly rides to Des Moines for medical trips, so those are three that we're very excited about. And then we are also going to start increasing shuttles from between Boone and Ames, and Ames to Boone. So I think right now, we're going to start that three times a day. I don't really know the exact times right at the moment, but we're going to be going down to work three times a day, so that starts September 6th. So we're excited to have those things coming up. We have some new vehicles that are going to be put into service, and thank you for the funding that you gave us for the 20% match on that. But we have three buses and one minivan that will be coming probably mid-September.
Yep, the van just got delivered last week, so we're starting the ready process for that, getting the graphics, all of the DOT requirements, the radio and such, and so we anticipate that one being in service in about 60 days. The buses have been delivered yet, those we're expecting to see mid-September, so we're looking closer to the first of the year before those are out of service and sales on the road.
So we're super excited about that too, because that will hopefully lower our maintenance costs, which then allows us to provide more services. Something that's always talked about is the hold times when people call, and just for a point of reference, we did 1,250 calls last week from people scheduling trips or wanting information about their trips, and our average hold time was two minutes, or yeah, two minutes and 56 seconds. So we are adding some additional staff, continue to try to get that hold time lowered, actually because they started tomorrow going through orientation, so we are hiring some additional staff to continue to work on that. And like we talked about last time, I just kind of want to give a little bit of what our trip purpose is, because I know we're very well-known in the community for providing trips for the elderly and disabled communities, but we do a lot more than that. We do, we take people to jobs, we do childcare, we take people to the university, grocery shopping, leisure, conjugal meals, you know, church services, those are all big ones, and we are open to the public, and we are open to everyone regardless of your age or abilities. So I can't say that enough, because we always get put into that stigma of us being only pretty elderly and disabled. One of the other things that we are looking at here is we've been asked to look at commuter shuttles, from getting people from the Des Moines area to Ames for some of the larger employers, and so we have been doing some, well, we, as I mean Brooke when I say we, has been doing some research on that and what that would look like. And we actually have three different options that we're getting kind of proposed, not going to get into great detail about that today, but that we will be proposing of what that would look like cost-wise and time-wise and some of that, but that is definitely something that we're interested in, is doing more of that commuter-type stuff, and so we'll continue to work with you on what that's going to look like. And Brooke will be...
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's an interesting problem that we find ourselves in here in Story County. Story County, and most people I don't think would realize this, we're a net importer of people every morning. We have more people coming into Story County to work than leaving Story County to work, and it's especially with the young people that we've got working in some of our technology fields that, for whatever reason, prefer to live in a larger metropolitan area. Trying to make sure we're doing a good job providing them options, getting back and forth, is something that we need to deal with, and I'm so appreciative to Herta for digging into, trying to see what, if any, role you guys can play in that, and I'm excited to see what your findings are.
Yep, so we will definitely be, we've done a lot of work on that, and so we'll be giving you some other options on that. Anyway, that's what we've got today. Things are rolling right along, we're continuing to increase ridership and look at varying markets. Brooke was just promoted to a new position for business manager of business development, and that's going to be personal jobs to do more partnerships and increase ridership and continue to look at that, so we're excited to have that be her job, and expect some great things to happen in the future, so.
Outstanding. Board, questions or comments?
So, and I'm taking on the Boone market, I mean, that's gone, you know, it was a kind of surprise that it's been pretty successful?
Yes, it has gone quite smooth, and we are fully staffed at this point with drivers, and, which is why we're going to start being able to ask more services to do between Boone and Ames. Those services were stopped, I believe, in April due to driver shortages, and we're not having that issue, so we're going to be able to start those again. Other than that, we've heard very minor complaints. Most of the issue has been with our hold times on the phone, but other than that, it's going really well, and we're maintaining the services and starting to add more services there as well.
Well, it made that much easier to appropriate a lot of new vehicles if we got that much more market to service, and I suspect that you already had the traffic anyway, and about here, we were in a position to do something about it.
Absolutely, thank you.
I like working on this, with this board, I like serving on the board. Julia, I've seen your staff step up, I think, three, four times just since January. Thank you for that, and I'm just pleased with how we're moving forward with working with Brooke, working with Sarah. That's on the agenda later today about Ann's presentation, so thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion and consideration of voluntarily posting notice of non-county meetings where a forum of the Board of Supervisors is expected to appear to receive information, answer questions, or provide commentary on county-related issues and policies, but where no discussion or debate between supervisors on such issues will occur. Lawrence?
Thank you. I know that was a long sentence to read. I wanted to make sure that the motion, if we make it, clarifies exactly some conversations I've had with Jessica. Ethan, I know Wade in at one point, and help me out here, Ethan, if you need to, okay? I always express some concern that we're not posting as we should be according to the law, well, excuse me, that I, as I thought we should be, okay? And also about notification to the public, all right? And so back in January and February, we, like when the state, or when Farm Bureau invited us to their meeting, we went ahead and we did a posting of that, because it was, we knew that we were going to get asked some questions about policy, okay?
Yeah, so I don't agree that that's why we posted it, but okay.
Okay, that's why I asked that we posted, all right? So now we have, coming up, the Ames Chamber of Commerce, one, and having, all of us having attended those meetings before, we know that we're all going to get asked some questions about policy and upcoming events, et cetera. So I once again started the inquiry about us posting something not as an official notice of a meeting, but the fact that we were going to be there and some topics would be discussed that we might deal with later. And so in having those discussions, and I talked to Jessica Reynolds and Ethan and Wade in, that a meeting like this does not in itself set that there would be an open meeting here, that where we would be discussing or delivering, and that is in fact, according to Jessica and what she told me, is what triggers whether we might end up in an open meetings violation or not, whether we might end up, depending on what the dialogue is as we go forward. So Jessica, as she has explained it to me, is that each of us are, of course, allowed to go ahead and say what we believe in response to a question. It's when we start the cross-discussion or the cross-talk. So she also pointed out that because there's no one taking minutes at this event, that that also would not seem to indicate that it would be, you know, fall for an open meeting. So my other concern, or my other desire remains, and that is to let the public know that anytime we as a quorum or more are going out where there's going to be issues that we will be asked about and asked to provide comment on, individually at least, but we're all hearing each other's comments, so that the public knows that in fact, that we are having these types of meetings with different groups. So this is the wording that I came up with based on that conversation with Jessica, there's a typo here, or a grammatical error in here, by the way, to fix, okay? But I'd really like to be able to notify the public that we are in fact being invited by these special interest groups to have a commentary. Some of the groups, you know, have no problem with it being open to the public, and that's their call, as I understand it, but I still feel that we should be letting our constituents know that these discussions are happening, and that we may be asked about questions and asked individually to make comment on them. So I'm asking that we voluntarily approve a policy, that we post something similar to this. Every time we are invited by a non-government entity, so that we just let the public know that we are, we're going out and we may be having this discussion.
Did the county attorneys...
And I want to fix myself, discussion, discussion is one of the words. Each one of us giving an opinion or comment on something, as opposed to a discussion where there's an exchange of ideas.
Did the county attorney's office give you an opinion of whether, and will speak directly to the chamber, whether this qualifies as a meeting or not?
Not as, it does not qualify as an open meeting for the purpose of the Chapter 21. That's what you're asking me?
Yeah, I think it qualifies as a meeting. Ethan, I'd ask you to address that if you want to. So I've got a letter, an email this morning, clearly you haven't checked your email yet, but an email this morning from County Attorney Jessica Reynolds, and Ethan, I'll read this and just ask if you want to comment on it. Dear Board, this is this morning at 8:47 a.m. Dear Board of Supervisors, I pulled up the BOS agenda for today's meeting, and I see Ms. Olson has created a draft document for her discussion item for the Ames Chamber forum. If this is approved at this meeting, my advice is that it should say "forum," not "meeting" in the last line. As I have explained, "meeting" is a legal term that is not met in this instance. Using that terminology could be problematic. I'd really appreciate seeing the proposed documents prior to them being added to the agenda, if possible, to keep the county in good standing legally. Ethan will be present in today's BOS meeting to answer any questions. Thank you, Jessica Reynolds. Anything on that, Ethan?
Yeah, Zachary, I think what's being described here with the Chamber of Commerce, it's just a informal gathering, ministerial assault purposes, either it doesn't qualify as a meeting under Chapter 21, hence therefore no requirement to post notice of the agenda at that time, no, you just take minutes, and, yeah, I think that's, is that your explanation?
Yeah, and I have no problem with calling it a forum, I mean, you know, other wording of that, and certainly no problem with in the future, I don't anticipate this coming up all the time, okay? But as far as, after I talked to Jessica just putting it on, we were already behind the Thursday at 3:00 p.m. agenda deadline, so I went ahead and put it on. So I have no problem with what she's asking for, you know, as far as that goes, and I apologize that if it, once again, I apparently didn't do something correctly. And so forum is great, to go ahead and change this, so it sounds like she was okay with a non-county event up at the top, that as it's put out there.
Yeah, so what I'm concerned about though, Lawrence, is not that we need to change the wording, or potentially change the wording of this, or that there's a grammatical error, but it's how hard would it have been for you two to share this with our legal counsel before you brought it to the Board? And I understand you needed to get it on the agenda, I was part of that entire dialogue where we were trying to get this on the agenda, and clearly it was an important conversation since you feel like going down this road, that the Board have today in this meeting. My problem is, so I thought we were making great progress over the last month, and this is another case in point where you are not listening to legal advice. Our legal people have told you, no, let me finish. Our legal people have told you that this does not qualify as a public meeting, yet you're going down the road of saying, it doesn't matter that it's not our meeting, it doesn't matter that legal has told me that this is not something the county needs to do. I want to insert the county, I want to force the county into doing this. The reality is, Lawrence, you can publicize anything you want, anywhere you want, anytime you want, as, Lawrence, you don't get to force the county into it, and where it's really problematic is, you seem to continually go down this road of getting opinions that you don't like and then just charging ahead anyway.
Well, that is a complete mischaracterization of my thought process in this and how I have pursued this, and so I'm not by force anybody, I'm asking for volunteer, for us to voluntarily inform the public, and I don't think that's forcing, okay? I've asked for us to discuss this at the Board, to take a vote, because that's my understanding what we need to do. To address the issue that you say about I can publicize anything on this, well, there is another entity involved in this, and so I felt that it was important to bring it to the Board and not for me to go out on my own and just say, hey, we're going to be at this. There's also been discussion in the past about what I can and cannot say, and when I can represent, the Board is going to do something and not do it. So I was erring, if you will, as this being an air. I was erring on the side of having the Board's support that we would go out and voluntarily tear the, to do this, so I'm not trying to force anything on anyone. I do believe that the more we can go ahead and notify people in advance who we're interacting with and why we're doing these interactions, is a benefit to the county and it's a benefit to the people and a benefit to the public. The oversight about sending it to Jessica is I will take full responsibility about that. I was rushing to get it on for Friday morning for the, or to get on for the Monday morning posting, and I did overlook that, and I apologize once again to the County Attorney for that oversight on that. It was not my intention to in any way offend her or leave her out of the mix here.
Yeah, and I'm not worried about offending, offending anybody. I am worried about leaving appropriate parties, and Jessica Reynolds is the County Attorney. She is our legal counsel, and I am worried about this continued process where you tend to insert your legal opinion in place of our legal counsel. We've seen it on multiple occasions, Lawrence, and please don't presume for a second that I'm trying to divine what your state of mind is when you do this. What I'm worried about, I've told you on multiple occasions, is adequate, I'd go for adequate right now, adequate functioning and operation of the Board of Supervisors and this lone wolf mentality that you have, where you're just going, and it doesn't matter what advice you get, it doesn't matter what our experts are telling you, you're just going, and in this case, this is not our event. You keep saying it's an event that another entity is involved with, with us, which implies that it's some kind of joint event that we're putting on. This is not a joint event. This is an event that the Ames Chamber is putting on that they've invited us to, no different than the Farm Bureau when they had their event and invited us, and at that point, this Board was still in the mode of, let's try to all come together. There've been multiple occasions where we've taken votes sitting right here that I wasn't all that happy about, but I thought for Board unity, we could get it done. They're easy to run through. You got that one. It's not our event, but yet we took it upon ourselves to post somebody else's event when we didn't have to, inserting the county in a position that the county's got no business being in. Second one was the way we appoint Boards and Commissions. It was just, that was one we should have never gotten to, we'll revisit it again in January, but it's a...
I disagree with that, that's a county policy, that second one is how we appoint the members of the Board.
Yeah, and what I'm talking about is, I'm talking about, I'm talking about this Board making decisions in order to try to have Board unity. Now we're to the point that we need to make right decisions because of the right decisions, because clearly Board unity is, does not seem to be an attainable goal. The final one is business friendly, where you came up with some kind of outlandish, negative connotation for business friendly, and we struck that from a resolution. We're not going to do that anymore, Lawrence. This is, this is not an appropriate place for the county to insert itself. It's not our event. You got plenty of, you got plenty of advice from our legal counsel and others that this was not a spot for the county, and yet you charged ahead, and it's problematic.
Okay, but once again, I don't agree even with your basic characterization here of that, I do think it's appropriate for the Board to discuss if we want to notify the public when we are having events where we know in advance that we are going to be asked about future policy, future possible decisions. I think the Chamber has been very accommodating, and they've already provided us a list of questions. There are 20 questions that we, possible questions will be asked. It is clear as you go through those questions that we will be asked about items that are policy, we will be asked about items that we will be making future decisions on when it comes to land use. And while I certainly respect and I appreciate Jessica Reynolds explaining more to me in depth with her belief about why this doesn't constitute an official meeting, so I understand the forum correction entirely, there is nothing that says that we can't notify the public, find a way to notify the public when we have upcoming meeting, upcoming events where we are going to be present in a quorum, that's two or three of us, and asked about these types of policy and future policy decisions. So we do disagree on how characterizing what this type of event consists of, Rick.
Yeah.
And I'd like to go back to something else you said, because I'm a little concerned when you talked about the business friendly. Well, I went to, I went actually to dictionaries to find the definition of what business friendly meant. It meant something to me, and I believe that to some of my, the people out there, because we represent everyone in the county, and that means that sometimes we need to let voices heard that normally wouldn't have a voice here.
We represent everyone in the county. Do we also represent businesses in the county?
We do, but all I asked is we take out business friendly, once I went and looked at what the official dictionaries, two different dictionaries define that, and it said a preferential treatment of, and that's a phrase out of, there must have been, what, does everybody agree, we have 200, we had 200 words on that proclamation, it was a boilerplate proclamation? And so I found a phrase that I felt was not representative of everyone in the community, where removal of that phrase then meant that we were approving a proclamation unanimously that supported business development. And here's my concern, I heard you just say, we're not going to do this in the future. There are three voices up here, they are three equal votes, and so, did you just say that you and Marty are going to start voting as a block against these? Because I'm concerned.
You absolutely, so you absolutely know that that's not what I said, and that's really, really good. What I said was, we're not going down this road anymore of trying to appease you when you get out in the wilderness, where you'll sit here and hear from our County Attorney that you do not have the authority to do something, and within 10 seconds, you do it anyway. We're not going down that road anymore.
I understand I don't have the authority on myself, which is why it's here in front of the Board. And so now I really am confused or getting a mixed message. I understand that we, all three of us, need to make decisions together. The way that we legally are making these decisions is by coming up to the Board, bringing information forward, bringing proposals forward, okay? So I'm unclear what I did was, what has created this as far as a criticism of my behavior as opposed to discussing the merits, pros, and cons of this and taking a vote on it?
Yeah, so I don't think there's a problem with us discussing it, merits, pro, and con, and taking a vote on it. I think there's a problem with this continued demonstrated behavior of your unwillingness to accept any advice at all from, from specifically legal, but in multiple instances where you, you do not share your thinking with those who should be involved. Jessica Reynolds, and to my knowledge, Ethan, you correct me, never have seen this draft that you put before us. Is that right or wrong, Ethan? I know Jessica has, and I'm not sure you have.
I saw it this morning.
This morning, okay, but has never seen this stuff, and my concern, Lawrence, is not about this specific discussion. I mean, I clearly feel differently than you, but that's fine, that's part of what the Board's supposed to do. My concern is the way all of this happened and your absolute resistance to taking any advice at all. With that, I'll stop and I'll sit back. Marty, I don't know if you have any more to add?
I'd like to just clarify, the rest of the advice that I got from Jessica Reynolds was, we may do anything we want voluntarily. That was the end sentence. So once again, as I listen to all of this, what I'm hearing is the air I made is in not shooting a copy to her at the same time, and to Ethan, I hear that from a, from that aspect, but that was her last, her last statement to me. But you guys can do voluntarily anything you would like to do.
Sure, I mean, the Board absolutely has that authority, but I'll just, I'll read this one sentence from Jessica Reynolds. As I have explained, "meeting" is a legal term that is not met in this instance." That's the advice, she explained it to you, and yet you come up with this draft on your own that immediately has "meeting" inserted, and, Lawrence, that's my concern. You get us out there where you don't accept this advice, and then you use terminology that's bad, or you make motions that put the county at legal jeopardy, and we've got to curtail this, and I was so encouraged for the last month or so, and now I feel us just sliding right back to where you were before, and it's concerning me. Marty, go ahead.
Well, let's unpack this little mishmash. A reasonable person, I tend to get to reasonable choices, and I have it, I'm certain, here I do have it. I have a exceptional attorney or staff tell me that there's no there or there. Fine, I accept that, this thing, we're coming up on 20 minutes of a meeting, going over, I suspect we'll add two then. How many of these forums, have you been to one every year that you have been, the supervisor?
Yeah, I believe that this is a standard thing that the Chamber does, and it's not just with us, they do it with the City Council, who've never posted, they do it with the school board, who've never posted, multiple entities that the Chamber puts on for their membership.
Lawrence, when was this an issue, because you have been in attendance, you couldn't have had a Board meeting or a city function when the Chamber put out these functions in preceding years? I mean, this will be my second, it'll be your first one, why was it not a problem last year, and why is it a problem this year?
I didn't sit on the Board last year.
Why is it not a problem? You speak not as necessarily, you speak as, or a voice for the community, you were speaking behalf of the community... behalf of the community, and the problem you think exists in the community is they don't have notification within the community. Where was that concern last year?
I brought that up multiple times in the 12, 13 years. Marty, I mean, this is not the first time I've brought up the issue, and I need to call it an issue, brought up the suggestion, brought up the pointing out about notice about these types of events. So, this is my first time on the board. This has been my first time to be able to bring this forward as an actual item of discussion. Before, I've always been out there, or I've written about it, as have commented on it in opinion columns, or I've been sitting up there, where I've been sitting now, providing comment. This is not new. This is now my opportunity to have brought this before the board. I would like to comment once again on meeting versus forum. Yes, she did inform me about what constitutes a public meeting. I hear the concern about that meeting could be interpreted both ways by different attorneys. I did not interpret when I wrote meeting as in the public meeting according to Chapter 21. I took it in a more generic term. So, once again, I acknowledge that had I been able to run this through, had I thought to run this through them, that could have been fixed before it was here, but we have an opportunity. We do that often up here, as we do correct wording.
I would have to say, at this point, as we did with the Farm Bureau, we're asked to be, of a portion of a meeting of another organization, is what we ask tomorrow, is what we ask in the future. So, to me, I think that we have been given direction by our attorneys. We have it upon ourselves and the ability to act accordingly with that advice. I don't see any there or there, I don't support this at all.
Okay. At this particular point in time, then, I'd like to ask my, the board if this is acceptable to do, to once again, go back and just clarify that there were, that there, no one sees any problem with me personally using my personal avenues as a, as a person where it be like my Facebook page, et cetera, of stating that we are going to be participating in a meeting, or I'm going to be participating in a meeting as part of invited by the Board of Supervisors, and that in itself is acceptable.
I kind of feel that if that's where we are right now, you're doing it anyway, but you're just...
I'm actually not doing it anyway, because I am trying to be a, pardon?
My perception is that's what you're doing right now.
Like, by sitting up here, you mean?
Yeah, you can see that you are, and you're offering up, we did it with the Farm Bureau, we're going with the Ainge Chamber, you're going to do it with somebody else. I got, I got a really good feeling that we're going to do this again.
No, we aren't. This is why I brought it here, is we're back to a scenario where in the attempt to try and do everything according to what a Board of Supervisors as a group would do, is I brought it to you for a vote. If it's voted down, which it sounds like it's going to be, but I don't know that until we take the vote, then from that point forward, any advocacy, if you want to call it that, that I would do would be based upon, here's my schedule this week, here's where I'm going to be, and here's the type of events I'm going to be at. I really genuinely thought I was doing the right thing.
Yeah, which, which you did a month ago. I mean, your last statement in the paper a month ago was, "I would do the same thing again if I could do it," and that's the problem. We continue down this same path. And, and so, one of my primary concerns is how these actions and this charge ahead, regardless of the advice you get mentality, the effect it's having on our staff. And so, the last two days, it has been turmoil, I think would be the right word, among some of our staff members over this on the agenda without them ever being talked to. And I've heard from multiple staff members, I'm actually going to read one that I got verbatim from a staff member, because I think it sums up what we're hearing really well. And I see the concern on your face, and I completely recognize and accept, Lawrence, that it is not your intention to cause these kind of issues. That does not change the reality that you are causing these kind of issues.
I would love to hear this, please.
Yeah, so, "What is this idea of posting notice for non-county meetings? Seems like another layer of administrative busywork that duplicates posting open meetings. What constitutes a non-county open meeting, and who decides this? Seems like an effort to control discussions." I heard that from multiple staff members in different verbiage, and I thought that just summed it up really, really well. This is a problem, Lawrence. I mean, so, I've said on a couple of occasions, it's not that concerning to me that you make the mistakes. What's concerning to me is you don't even seem to recognize before, during, or after, or acknowledge that you're making these mistakes, or the impact that it has. All these are ripple effect, right? They cause issues that we don't need to cause. And Marty's right, we spent 25, 30 minutes on this, but it's important that we try as a board to figure this out, and for us to figure this out, you absolutely have to be more accepting of the professional, really, really good advice that you're getting and not charge ahead in spite of that advice.
I am accepting of that advice, and I don't doubt what I've already said about what the discussion was, what was said to me. And I'd like to now come to this comment here. I don't think transparency is ever something that we should short sell because of process, all right? And that's kind of what I interpret, what I heard in that last reading here. It's good, they're good questions, they're valid questions, but when does transparency, if this board wants to move toward being more transparent, more forward in communicating with the communicating, community, which is what I've proposed here related to this particular type of scenario, I'm, I'm trying to now fit into how that would cause so much turmoil among the staff. I do know that when I came on in January and I first brought up about postings, there was a lot of discussion, and it turned out that there was outside of an official meeting posting, there was some lack of clarity about who was even going to post certain types of events. So, I know, and I, and I believe, Rick, you said as we went through this whole email train, I started by asking someone, someone who I know in the past had taken the lead in posting some of these non-standard, non-official public meeting events, asking this person specifically, did we ever decide who would be responsible for posting? Because there was discussion about training more than one person, because there was an issue of availability of posting. So, I do remember back then that we did have some discussions that included several different people. I hear in this reading of this again, that apparently we didn't settle down to the extent that I thought we had. That's going to go back to, I think we have much more clarity now about, as I at least thought I had clarity about what we need to bring to the board so the board makes a decision or turns down a particular item. So, the fact that the staff would be concerned, to me, sounds like, okay, they, there's some concern about extra work. I'm not aware of how much additional work that would be, because last time around, the issue was discussing who had responsibility for the posting, not how hard it was to get it posted.
Yeah, that added a lot of, a lot of things to what was a pretty simple thing there, and I don't know that I'm all that appreciative that you're going to attribute staff being concerned about a little hard work to any of that. I didn't hear any of that in there. I heard it being more about the process that we go through and the fact that two out of the three of us, when we want something to come forward to the Board of Supervisors, we at least vet it through staff and make sure that staff and legal are on the same page about what should go on, and one of us does not.
Which staff person would this be, have been vetted for, other than the Attorney's Office, I understand about my area? Can you please tell me which staff person would have had to vet, be vetted through considering this is a policy decision?
Well, for me? Who would a policy like this impact? Who are we asking to take this on? Have we thought through all the logistics of what would happen? Again, Lawrence, this is much more to me, a concern about process that you're using than it is about this specific item. This is, this is just a demonstration of the issues we're dealing with. Ethan, it looked like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I would just say, the County Attorney's Office is a very concerned, take very seriously the county's requirement to abide by the provision of Article 1. Chapter 1 provides a rational, rational basis of our decisions are open and available to public people. But we take that very seriously. So, when we're asked questions of whether or not something complies with, or subject to what we mean, we're giving advice based upon years of attorney general opinions, our own opinion we've issued to the board, and to make sure those comply. I think that's why the board has these meetings every week, either open meetings board, where that deliberation discussion takes place. These individual forum events, as is our previous script advice, don't rise to that level, and I think in the future, we'd just be happy to give an opinion anytime there's a concern, question about or not, an event, a gathering of board constitutes a meeting. We're happy for that opinion, can't, can't forget, and I think that's what we did this past week.
Okay, so, in Jessica's making the direct statement to me, the board may voluntarily do anything it wants to do. Is that part of the legal advice, do you feel that she gave to me?
That's correct. If you want to go above and beyond what Chapter 21 requires, and voluntarily post notice of events or gatherings, that's within the board's privilege.
But, but let's just be very clear, Ethan, is there a difference between can and should?
I think there is a definition of can and should when it comes to practical considerations.
Right.
In terms of the board discussing here, practical considerations, we have a patient which would be a burden on staff, or in, since it's more time than food necessary.
How about inserting ourselves in, how about inserting the county into something that is not a county event? There's, there's a lot of things, Lawrence, that we collectively, as a Board of Supervisors, can do that does not mean that we should be doing it.
Given the fact that we would be posting this as a notice just that we're participating, okay, with giving comment, can you explain how we then are inserting ourselves into another event? I mean, we're saying we're going to do something, and there's going to be some discussion, comment made, but we're, I'm not, this doesn't call upon that entity to do anything else.
But you already have the ability to do that in multiple facets, and I would even say you have the ability to do that before and after the event in your supervisor liaison updates. In fact, there's no question in my mind that if we had not had this 40-minute discussion on this today, that at least one of us, and maybe multiple of us, would in fact say at the end of this meeting, hey, we're all together tomorrow over at a chamber function, and let's go. That's different than the county formally trying to notify about an event that's not ours. This is the Chamber, in this specific case, this is the Chamber's deal. They get to publicize, notify, invite, do whatever they want to do with, and if we go beyond, this is my view on this specific instance, if we go beyond that and we start to formally do something as a county, other than just our notifications, oh, you know, oh, by the way, we're going to be there, I think it's completely inappropriate, and I think it's problematic. The line in here that gets to me, who decides what is a, what qualifies for this? Because there's a line out there somewhere, how about we just, so for us, and I'll say this, because you made what I took as kind of a disparaging comment about our transparency. Story County is easily the most transparent county of the, of the 99 in Iowa. It's not even close. And we have already decided that not only are we going to notice every one of our public meetings as required by law, but we're also going to notice every other one of the county-sponsored meetings that we're doing. Hundred percent. There's just a real problem, I think, we're starting to decide, well, we're going to notify for this event, but we're not going to notify for that event. Where's that line? How's it decided? Is that board action every time there's an event like this? I just, this is not thought through. It's clearly not following advice. It was not vetted through staff. Those are the procedural problems with this.
The reason that the motion was so long was to include those types of criteria and the discussion that I had with Jessica Reynolds. That is why it's so specific. Who decides? It says right there, it's a quorum of where this event is going to happen, where this is going to happen. So, I, I feel that that in itself, the motion very clearly lies out, what are the guidelines about what it is or not. So, to address, and I'm still back to staff being notified, I'm trying in this process then to, I understand about the Attorney's Office, like I said before, and then we're back to who would be posting it? That would be the staff that has to be notified and, like, correct in that, that who would be posting it?
Yeah, I would, if anything were posting, I would assume we would run it through our process, but we haven't, we haven't talked to that, that staff member or those staff members at this point that I know of about what this would look like if it were to pass today. The other one I'll mention is, okay, so you and I both attended the Legal Women Voters Annual Meeting this year. How, where does that fit?
We were not asked to comment on anything.
Could've been.
We were not invited, we were not invited, we did not know, you know, we knew upfront that we were attending as participants, and that's my understanding of what the mysterious is, we were participants as members sitting out in the audience. We were not invited to speak, we were not invited to comment on anything. I did get up, but I was commenting slowly on something that was league-related and had nothing to do with the Board of Supervisors. So, once again, I feel it's written out quite well. I hear the concern about the time being discussed on this, and yet at the same time, I know that the County Attorney has made it very clear that we are to have these types of discussions up here at the board table, and if that does eat up some time, then that is how the process of all ruling as a Board of Supervisors goes.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the time we spend, I just think it's notable, well, I just think it's notable that we're taking this much time on something that you didn't really vet through anybody. We would like things to be a little more vetted so that we, we aren't having, we aren't having conversations on something that hasn't been run through the most rudimentary levels of what it would need to go through before it comes to board.
I'm going to, if this is not the appropriate time, Ethan, please let me know, okay? I had, in an earlier email exchange, asked you about having, that we actually have a workshop about what really are the written and unwritten rules of being a supervisor, and I was told that you didn't think that was necessary. I'm going to repeat that request up here so that it's clearer for me, and maybe clearer for others, about what is the impetus and what is the ability of a supervisor to act in her or his official capacity and bring something to the board? And so, I'm going to ask for that. I know that we would have to do that as a separate motion on a forward agenda, but...
Well, and I'll say the same thing that I said then, that they're already written down. It's called Iowa Code 331. You should read that.
I have read it.
Okay, well, it doesn't feel like it. And the second part is, then, knowing what you can do and what you should do, and knowing the correct process to go through, and being more inclusive. I stopped at your office the other day, and I told you how thrilled I was with the very clear efforts that you had been making over the last month. You were clearly working on being more inclusive, being more community with staff. You were working on showing appreciation to staff, which was a change. And, and I was so excited about this, and then it all blew up here the last couple of days, and it is, it's really disheartening that we're having these, these conversations again, and again, and again. Lawrence, it's Code 331, and it is following standard protocol, which means including those that are going to be involved in whatever decision the board makes.
And, well, and 331 is, I read 2331, I don't see it getting, I don't get down to that level about that. But I hear what you're saying about inclusiveness. I do definitely have a different level about where is inclusiveness. Certainly, in this particular situation, I looked at this as purely policy being driven. I left out the people that I think I did need to leave out, but one thing certainly that it sounds like from this is I need to learn... But one thing certainly that it sounds like from this is I need to learn even more about what it takes to post something on Civic Plus, because I thought I had understood everything, that all of the process that goes through when we put something on an agenda. And I certainly thought that part of that process was that we were not talking for every item we want to put on the agenda, especially those that, let's say, that this had come in by Thursday at 3:00 PM, there was a specific reason it wasn't in by then. The conversation didn't start until Friday morning. Then I guess about, I'm going to need to make some lists about all the staff members I have to start talking to before I go in.
Well, just tell me this, Lawrence, from your perspective, in the time you've been here, not counting the policies that you brought forward, because those are a whole different animal, any other policy that's come before this board since January, since you've been here, is there one, one single policy that's come before this board that was not vetted through staff, probably came from staff, was written by staff, was edited by staff, was not fully vetted by the county attorney's office prior to it coming to us? Was, is there one single policy that, other than what you proposed, that did not follow that process?
I believe in part that I'm bringing forward some policies that have not been on staff's radar or that staff don't directly deal with, because we're talking about the actual operations of the board of supervisors. So in answer to your question, no. These policies that staff bring forward are very related to their areas, and we, as the board of supervisors, we, you know, for us to look at policies, they start and they end with us and propose with us when it affects us and our operations.
Sure, but I don't think the first part of what you said is accurate, because I know we've had multiple policies in this last six months that in fact I have initiated. It's just I've initiated them through staff, let staff run with it. So you take a general idea of the staff, hey, we need to get this done. I believe we need to get this done. Can you see what it would look like? Staff goes through, crafts the initial document, it goes to Ethan to review, revise, make suggestions. Ethan and staff work together to get to that. They think through the logistics of how all that would be done. And then ultimately, it comes to the board of supervisors for us to discuss, deliberate, take action on. This isn't even close to it.
Once again, I think in those instances too of what you're proposing, they have gone through because there had been a component, a much larger component, about the impact. I hear what I did wrong in not running that through you guys, so when you're seeing it this morning, but as I come back to, it sounds like the legal advice I got verbally, with the exception where all we're off on is one word, and this is really lies with us. Unless I'm missing a part here, and that's what I'm asking for help with, is that after you guys say, yeah, it's worded correctly, it go, this if we enacted, would go to staff and would, staff would put it on. And we have the guidelines for when this would be done. I believe we still as supervisors, A, individual supervisor would need to then say, okay, we need to discuss posting because it's according to this rule. So I'm lost about whether would be other layers. That's where I genuinely am lost here, because once I think we approve something and then legal's looked at it, we go to a staff member who has posting ability, and we say, please post this. So I'm lost about who else would be in this mix.
Yeah, and so for me, well, clearly I wouldn't have brought something like this forward, but if I wanted to bring something like this forward, I would have probably started with LeAnn Harder or Deb Shilroff. I would have asked, I'd have said, hey, here's a concern I've got, can we look at what our policy would say on this? If we craft something, they would have either told me I was barking up the wrong tree from their perspective, or they would have crafted something. That would have gone through legal, legal would review it and got it to us. And let me just say this about the way Ethan works and the way our staff works, all of that could have happened Friday morning, hundred percent. If you had an issue you wanted done and you decided to be inclusive, a hundred percent of that could have happened if you had chosen to go that pathway. But instead you did, you took what you verbally heard as legal advice, which I don't think Jessica Reynolds would represent, that she gave you the same legal advice that you're saying she gave you. And then you just ran on your own, didn't share it with anybody, and the first chance people get to see it is this morning. So that's the process. Let's get to the end of this. Lawrence, do you want to make a motion?
I will. I make a motion that we accept this as written. I won't reread it, show it to you.
I hear no second. Marty, last chance? All right, no second, so we're done with this. Die's for lack of a second, there's no action. Next item on our agenda is consideration of minutes from August 8th.
I would so move.
Motion, second. Any corrections, additions, or notations? Olson?
Aye.
Chiddy?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions, board.
Move consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those, Chiddy?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda, board, please pull item number two. That's going to come back to us next week. We don't have everything that we need there. Anything else on the consent agenda?
I'd just like to make a comment on number four, but we're not, I'm not requesting that we pull separately. The draft that accompanies this, this is about setting the date for the workshop on September 12th, and we know we have a little bit of tweaking to do on the wording of the notice that was attached, but other than that, we're really looking for the no, for really the approval on September 12th. But one of the first people that would provide feedback on that draft is on vacation this year.
Move consent agenda with removal of item two.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chiddy, go ahead and say aye.
Aye.
All right, so consent agenda, all three of us said aye. That takes us to public hearing items, and we've got four. We're only going to have three, because one of them we're not ready for today. But the first one is consideration of resolution 1821. It's our budget amendment. Lisa Markley.
Morning, Lisa.
Good morning. I have, you know, told you guys I'd be here to comment on the budget, and here I am. So the memo was published after the newspapers. I'm at this third, as required by law. No comments were received by my office either, or by me. I don't know if it was received by anyone else. Overall, the revenues are increasing by $100,000. That's only 24% of the original budget. The only reason I'm adding revenues right now is to offset some expenditures for the pipeline inspections that we're still paying for and getting revenues for and paying out. Expenses are increasing by $1,024,287 of the original budget, which is 2.4% increase. In order not to exceed expenses by service area, which is how we budget, we need to amend these expenses. 35.6 of it is for carryforward of asset commitment and rest fee assistance. Did you guys approve since the original budget? 35.5 for watershed consult, facade grants, housing trust fund, the advice that approved. $20,000 for election, for elections. Lucy did here to talk to you about purchasing scanners. We don't know, it'll be $20,000, but the $20,000 is what we're doing, like just in case. $75,000 for NPL expenses for geothermal flushing, the period for funds for IT, and $100,000 for pipeline inspections, which is passing.
Right.
Okay? There's $793,000 in capital projects, including conservation transfer, regarding TELC, carryover construction. Overall, the fund balances for after this amendment, we're down about 37% in the general supplemental, general slash supplemental, which is 8% higher than the original budget, and the roll fund, we're at 20.88, 5% higher than the original budget.
So items, not including the pipeline where you've got money coming in and going out that we didn't budget, but we're still working on. This is, this is all really carryover, or a couple unexpected expenses, the scanners for our elections and the geothermal flushing as we try to get to the NCAL, whatever seems to be growing in our geothermal system. The other thing I would note, and Lisa, if you want to make a comment on it, by my look at our history, this is the first time ever that the county's been over $20 million in total, total reserve funds at this end or start of any fiscal year.
Yeah, you and I had that discussion, and I went through the history, which is good.
Yep, exactly. So things are looking really, really good. Reserve funds are strong, and this is what we need to do. Board, any questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
None.
So in that case, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address resolution 1821. Seeing no one moving the microphone, we'll close the public hearing and turn to the board for action.
No consideration of resolution 22, or 1822, as was it?
21.
21.
Eight.
Do it again.
Redo.
Yeah, you're on the next line, and we're up on, we're up on the public hearings.
1821, there you go, right there.
We'll get to 22 here in a minute.
I'm going to second.
Absolutely. We have a second for resolution 1821. Any further discussion? Chiddy?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. 1821 passes. We'll see you again in a minute there, Markley.
One minute?
Yeah, exactly. Consideration of proposed plans, specifications, and form of contract for generator at the Human Services Building, and authorization, authorization to release invitation for bids, and set a bid opening of September 5th. Jeff Harris from Mackey Cow, Pearson, and others.
Others. Yes, we're brought along, Justin Olson and Linda from Blue Stone Engineering, and the engineering work on generator in civilization, really the bulk of the work. Our work's kind of superficial, just so they've done the majority of the work. I think they have questions regarding the generator and the process for that, that would be there. I guess, yeah, as you mentioned, our plans are, we'll put it in your packets, I think, of your agenda. They are ready to go. We're intending to issue plans as soon as you approve for bidding and taking bids September 5th for the proposed generator. We're proceeding with a full backup, as you recommended originally, so in fact, we'll be unpacked with iteration.
Well, we appreciate you digging into this. Cal, can you give us a 30-second synopsis of how we got here in this conversation?
Well, in discussions of the COOP COG, and as having a backup facility available, we looked at the HSC building, but the problem was that for the IT and for any kind of services to move over there, we didn't have any backup power if there was an issue with the Ames Utilities. So this is how we overcome that. We will have a full functioning building over there with the implementation of a generator system for that building.
And so to be a similar generator system, I'm not saying the system will be exactly the same, but similar capacity and operation to what we have both here and at the Justice Center?
It will be like the Justice Center. It'll be 100%.
Okay. Here is just targeted.
Yes, yes. Primary facilities for the EOC mainly, and to keep some of the utilities running for heating and cooling.
Okay, so the only thing I would note is COOP COG that Cal referred to as continuity of government operations in the event of a disaster. There was a decision that has now been amended, but there was a decision made to have that serve as our backup EOC in the event that this building was damaged beyond use and we had to activate the emergency operations center. Now that has moved, but it doesn't negate the reality that we would need that building in the event of a disaster that could include no power getting to that building. Anything to add?
No, I think they've done an excellent job, and it looks like it's pretty straightforward, and I'm looking forward to moving along with it if you decide to approve it.
Well, we really appreciate the work that was put in, and I think it puts the county in a really good position. Questions before we open the public hearing?
None.
All right, so we'll open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone who would like to discuss this plan, specifications, or setting a bid opening for the new generator or generators at the Human Services Center. Seeing no one moving the microphone, all those in the public hearing, turn to the board for action.
Move consideration of the planned specifications, the form of contract for the generator at Human Services Center, authorization to release the petition of bids, and set a bid date of 9/5/17.
I would second.
Motion, a second. Further discussion? Anything to add? So appreciate you guys' work. Thanks for being here today. Chiddy?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It passes. I told Markley it would only take a minute.
Thanks.
She just walked by.
We have the other ordinance.
Oh, we got to do the, oh, she's right, she, okay. So first consideration of ordinance 262, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of Story County, and this is the Donaldson rezoning request, and it's a million.
Yes. Hi. How are you guys?
You heard that yourself?
Hi. Please wake up the computer here.
Markley, it's 15.
At first I thought I was wrong, maybe it was something.
No.
So this again is the Donaldson rezoning request, first consideration of ordinance number 262. The applicant is Ryan Holland from Davis Brown, Combs, Schwartz, and Roberts PC, and the property owner is Lauren Nancy Donaldson. The property location is on 670th here in Nevada Township, about four and a quarter miles southeast of Nevada, where the star is approximately. So a little background before we get into what the request is. This is the approximate parcel outline here. You can see this is 670th. This parcel was created when it was split in 1979 from this across 670th from kind of this farmstead area. It's been zoned A1 agricultural since we had a zoning code. However, it's never been in crop production from review of aerial photos. It has a few accessory structures on it. One of them is a camping shelter. That we can actually send the interior photos of that, showing it's really is camping shelter garage type. And they've tried a couple different ways to build a house on this property. There's exceptions in the A1 zoning district to the 35-acre minimum lot size requirement to build a house. They don't need any of those exceptions. They also apply for a variance. Our previous owner did in 1990. That was also denied. So here we are today with this current request, which would be a zoning map amendment from the A1 Agricultural District to the AR Agricultural Residential District, for the entire parcel. Again, this request would allow for a house to be built because the AR Agricultural District has a minimum lot size requirement of one acre versus the 35-acre minimum lot size requirement in the current zoning district. There is a conservation easement included with this rezoning request, so approximately three acres in the southwestern portion of the parcel. I'll show you, make sure it here in a second, would be for the house, and then the remainder would be for the conservation easement, the Story County Conservation. Again, really, the A1 Agricultural District is tailored to high-value, large agricultural parcels, and this is not one of those parcels. The AR District is going to allow this to be an more productive use for the house and the conservation easement. And the AR District is compatible with our comprehensive plan. So this is the proposed conservation easement area on the parcel. Here you have a potential dwelling location, and the remainder that's not in the conservation easement would be for dwelling not in conservation purpose. Again, it's 4.75 acres. And this conservation easement area, it will be surveyed, so we have a more exact number on what that would look like. Our county conservation board will take final action on that as well to approve it. The conservation easement is important because it relates to the Gladys Wood Preserve, which is the Story County Conservation owned property, just to the north of the subject property, which is here, so the preserve is here. And here is the subject property and preserve, they're highlighted, but they relate to a larger Indian Creek watershed. The Gladys Wood Preserve, it includes a prairie, inlandlands, there aren't improvements to the area, it is a preserve, there is a parking area, however. And so this conservation easement would enhance the conservation and the value of that preserve, and even greater Indian Creek watershed. So this is the subject property. We're looking at camping shelter slash garage. We're looking... that preserve and even greater Indian Creek watershed. So this is the subject property, we're looking at camping shelter slash garage. We're looking northeast now from the subject property. Across the 670th, there is a dwelling back here on an adjacent parcel. Looking southwest along 670th, there is some agricultural land to the south of the parcel. Here's another accessory structure, the third accessory structure, and this is kind of a conservation easement area. It's wooded. And here's the Gladys Wood Preserve, so you can see the woodlands that connect to the subject property back here and then there's that prairie here. So moving into the standards of approval for a rezoning, there are five standards of approval, the first of which is that the proposed rezoning shall conform to the Story County Development Plan, which is our C2C plan. This first slide shows the zoning compatibility matrix from our C2C plan. This parcel is designated agricultural conservation and natural resource area. Agricultural conservation is compatible with the A1, A2 and AR districts. So we're not requesting an amendment to the C2C plan here because it's compatible. The natural resource area then is compatible with the Greenbelt Conservation District and the residential, our residential conservation overlay. We are not asking to designate this parcel as such because of the conservation easement. We'll get into how that meets our comprehensive plan in the next two slides. So looking at what the agricultural conservation area is, it, the designation is for large agricultural parcels, high value farmland. This is a map showing the values, they're color coded, so red would be lower value. The subject property is what has a value of 58, which is the lowest of all adjacent parcels. You've got a lot of 90s in the surrounding area, it's low ag value, small parcel. So a lot of the principles in the agricultural conservation district are to conserve high value agricultural lands and so we meet those principles because it's not ag land and it's not high value.
Higher than ag.
Right. And so it does however meet one principle of the ag conservation area and that is to design areas for development to limit conflicts between ag, non-ag, as well as ensure they're compatible with the surrounding area and this through the conservation easement, not taking any ag land out of production, meets that principle. So looking at the natural resource area, these are generally flood plain areas, which is in the case of this property. There's some flood plain related to a branch of the Indian Creek. There is a principle, principle three that's met here where we consider areas identified as natural resource areas for consideration in the Greenbelt Conservation District and/or take necessary steps to ensure resource conservation through other mechanisms. And so we need this principle because the conservation easement is that other mechanism. We don't have to resell it to another district because actually the conservation easement is more restrictive than the Greenbelt Conservation District would be with the uses. So our second standard of approval is that it conforms to the statement of intent for the proposed district requirement. I won't read the whole statement of intent for the agricultural conservation, agricultural residential district, sorry. But there is one sentence at the bottom that says it's not intended to permit isolated rural dwellings incompatible with surrounding land uses and not in accordance with the Story County Development Plan. I just want to touch on that sentence because there could be some questions on how that is met. So the adjacent parcel to the east where this red triangle is, has a dwelling on it, so it wouldn't be completely isolated. This parcel and this parcel are considered buildable because they either meet the 35 acre size requirement or there was a farmstead on them. There, of the four adjacent properties without dwellings, one is the Gladys Wood Preserve and the others that are related to some sort of ag use. So it's not incompatible with those surrounding ag use properties, it's not taking any ag out of production and it's really preserving the Gladys Wood Preserve. So it's not incompatible and it's not isolated. So our third standard of approval is that the proposed rezoning should be compatible with surrounding land uses and development patterns. We've really gone over a lot of these already. So basically again, there's dwellings in the area, other parcels are buildable and it's really a neat parcel in its low ag value for the area and having a conservation easement on it. Fourth, when you have a parcel with a large amount of natural resource area on it, if you don't do a residential conservation overlay rezoning, you have to have other conditions protecting the identified areas and that would be the conservation easement. So this condition is, this standard is also met. And then finally, when you're rezoning from the A1 agricultural district to another zoning district, you have to meet land evaluation and site assessment score thresholds. So that looks at the ag value of the land, so not taking high value land out of production. In this case, it's, the score is 251 for the parcel and the threshold is 267, so it's met, we can rezonate following this standard. We routed this for interagency review back in March. We also sent notice letters twice now to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and this meeting, published legal notice twice in all of the county newspapers. We placed a development proposed sign on the property and we received one verbal comment and that was a supportive comment from an adjacent landowner to the south. We kind of looked at the ag land in one of the second letters. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request and recommended approval of the rezoning request with a condition and that is that the conservation easement is approved. So the rezoning would be contingent on that conservation easement. The commission also had several other questions regarding the compatibility of the rezoning. When we look at a lease score for a parcel and that score, if it's low enough, allows a parcel be buildable, we look at surrounding land uses. And so the commission was concerned that if we change the zoning of this one parcel, will it allow other parcels then to meet a threshold to become buildable or we're going to create a lot of development in this area? So I've looked at surrounding parcels and we found that no, it wouldn't lower the score or scores of adjacent parcels enough to make those buildable. Two of the adjacent parcels do have pretty low lease scores and those could actually meet the threshold to be rezoned, but they could have already and if they don't have these unique circumstances, they're probably not going to be. Any rezoning would have to be compatible with our C2C plan, not taking ag land out of production, those kinds of things. So it's a high bar to meet. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission already looked at, or sorry, looked at these points of analysis as well in making their recommendation. And these are just some key thoughts. So the parcel's not at high ag value, so the AR district will allow for more productive use of the parcel. The rezoning is unique from other potential rezoning requests from the A1 to AR district in that it's a low ag value. Most of the surrounding parcels have some sort of ag production on their property except for the Gladys Wood Preserve, which is another point making this request unique in that this involves conservation easement directly related to the Gladys Wood Preserve and that conservation easement is more restrictive than the Greenbelt Conservation District zoning. The conservation easement also ensures that this request does not just benefit the property owner, it's really benefiting the public good as well. And then the final points are that the proposal conforms with the statement of intent for the AR district and it conforms with our C2C plan and principles outlined through the C2C plan. So here are your alternatives. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended alternate two, which is the Story County Board of Supervisors approves the proposed rezoning map amendment, subject to the low condition from the A1 agricultural district to the AR agricultural residential district and sets the second consideration for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017. Any questions?
No, good job of.
The Department really put a lot of time into it, it sounds like planning zoning, but yeah, went through this pretty thoroughly too, so it seems like we got to a happy place. But I think we've done a really good time here.
Sure, and just for my information, then I want to see if the applicant wants to address it. Is there, is there any reason that this board wouldn't want to consider waiving the third and final reading when we get to next week? I know we do that in the past, but we want to make sure we don't, if there's a circumstance. So I think it's important that we at least go to the second reading to make sure that there's time for anybody to comment. In the past, Jerry, it feels like we've waived the third and final reading a lot of time.
Since I've been here, you've gone through at least two considerations and then you waived the third.
And so I just ask the board to keep that in mind. Yeah, I just ask, ask the board to keep that in mind as we move forward. With that, I would, any questions for Jerry Amelia? Great job, Amelia, presenting all that. Any questions before we see if the applicant wants to speak to us?
None.
Okay, Ryan, would you like to address us at all before we open the public hearing?
Yes, sir, just briefly.
Absolutely. Thanks for being here and thanks for your clients for being here.
First, I wanted, so I want to comment just briefly.
Start by introducing yourself first.
Ryan Holland of Davis Brown Law Firm in the Ames office on behalf of Martin Nancy Donalds. Just briefly on the request generally, I do and my client, my clients do, this is a net positive for the county, not only due to the conservation easement, but due to the improvements that are going to be placed upon the property, not only with the dwelling, but in terms of having a full-time resident there to tend that area. They've done, Lauren and Nancy have done a pretty good job over the past couple decades tending to it, but when you live in Ames and the property is in, I call it rural Nevada, it's difficult to do so. The second thing is that we have done a lot of work upfront, Planning has done a lot of work as well, but Lauren and Nancy came to me at the tail end of last year and we started conversations with Mike Cox at Story County Conservation. We drafted a proposed conservation easement. That got run through the conservation board. They have in principle agreed to the terms, it's gone through the Story County Attorney's Office, have been in communication with the even about the provisions, terms and conditions of that easement. It is an 11 or 12-page document, so it's not a one-page instrument, it's something that provides robust protection for that area and it's perpetual. So whoever owns that parcel in the future, they're going to be subject to the terms of that conservation easement, which I think, as Amelia stated, is what really makes this a unique request. The landowner being willing to put approximately half of the parcel into a perpetual conservation easement, the work that they've done ahead of time with the county, both in terms of the county attorney's office and the conservation board, to have everybody on board prior to bringing the request to Planning even, I think sets this aside from just a normal, you know, ask for forgiveness rather than permission sort of deal. It's a, it's a non-complying law, we understand that, but we do think at this stage, it's a unique request that would not in any way precipitate slippery slope of applicants in the future.
Yes, so appreciate that and so I believe that the board should and in fact does look really, really hard at what's the highest and best use for any parcel that we have out there. And I'm so appreciative to you and Planning and Development and everybody else who's been involved in really going through the process to make sure that that's where we're trying to get and in fact, that's what you brought forward to the board to consider today. So thank you for that. Anything further or any questions for Ryan before we open the public hearing?
So adoption of the conservation easement doesn't disallow any use of the Donaldson's of this property? I mean, just as transit or joint?
Here, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, so the question is as to the easement area, what are the restrictions?
Yes.
So restrictions primarily, no improvement could be, what I would call legally improvements.
No building improvements.
No improvements could be put upon the property, not for use with agricultural, not for agricultural purposes, essentially for recreation, recreation conservation purposes only. And what I would tell you is you saw the easement area that I've read outlined, that runs along the ridge for that ravine that runs through the property and that easement line, the in principle easement boundary was actually drawn in conjunction with conservation. So conservation said, if we're going to do an easement, this is where we would like that line to run. Mike Cox of Conservation has been great about working with my clients and sort of giving layman's explanations of what they can and can't do. But Marty, for all intents and purposes, Lauren and Nancy aren't going to be doing anything other than to preserve and improve, it's removing other basic species. There's, there's no intent nor would the easement permit really any other use other than recreational conservation. They couldn't, you know, park RVs over there and, you know, have a RV camp or even.
Good, we have that problem in some parts of the county, but here it's not going to be there. Thank you, Ryan, that's, that was kind of where I thought, I just wanted to hear you flesh that one out.
So that's a good question, Marty. Loris, anything?
No.
All right. In that case, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone who would, who'd like to address ordinance 262. And seeing no one moving the microphone, we'll close the public hearing, turn to the board for action.
I would move this first consideration to ordinance 262 with the adoption of alternate two as presented with a second hearing of Tuesday, August 22nd and a waiver of third reading at that time.
Yeah, and so all I'll say is it can be our intent that we're going to get to waiving that third reading, but we would actually do that on the 22nd. So what I heard is a motion with option number two, adopting 262 on first reading and then setting a second reading for next Tuesday.
On the second.
Motion in a second, further discussion? Jerry, anything to add?
I would just want to commend Ryan and his firm for the work that they've done on this easement. It's stronger in some respects, many respects in regard to our Greenbelt Conservation Overlay District. As Amelia stated, it's, it's stronger than that conservation. So this is really a good thing for the Donaldsons or Story County.
It feels like a good thing and I'd just say this to Amelia. Amelia, they're not always this fun, I would, I would imagine this one's a lot of fun. They're not always this fun. Thank you for your work on this. Anything further, board?
None.
Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes of, 262 passes, first reading, second reading will be next, next Tuesday. Thank you, everybody. We're not doing item number four today, which is Resolution 1814, simply because there's factors beyond our control that have not come together, so we're going to hold that for a later date when those factors do in fact come together. That gets us through public hearings. We're now to additional items. See, it was only a minute, Lisa. We're now to additional items and now we're to Marty Chitty's favorite, 1822. Don't get too early.
Can we move to proof of now?
Let's go through it before we mount. Thank you guys, have a good day.
Resolution 1822, just authorization to spend the dollars that you just amended?
You mean you don't want, just have them, you want to also spend them?
Right. For the auditor, we're amending an additional 20, an additional 6, general county benefits 7, now the N67, those conservation 298064, main services 30,000, facilities management 23250, IT 5775, county wide 589.
Questions for Markley? We've been through what, it was all four already, so this is more procedural than anything, but if there's any questions, now's the time to ask.
None.
Okay, I take a motion in that case.
I'll do it again. I would move, it's a resolution, Resolution 1822 as presented.
I will second on 18.
Got a motion in the second, further discussion? Lisa, anything to add?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Next item is discussion and consideration for Story County to partner with Heart of Iowa Regional Transit Agency to present community information sessions on Hurda's services in six communities, August 28th to September 1st and allocate $75 total for beverages and lights and snacks to be served for participants. It's an unbudgeted request and this is another one from Laura Olson. Laura, take it away.
Okay, as, as I say in my accompanying request letter, as we get out and talk more about transportation in the county and as Julia referenced earlier this morning, there's still a real misconception out in many areas that Hurda's only for people with special needs or for older people going to doctor's appointments, some very limited uses. And Hurda obviously, as you heard this morning, has many more services available and there is a need, I believe, to go out there and present some community information sessions out in the, some of our smaller communities. I gave an example of a discussion I had at the quadrant meeting when we were in Zering and afterwards a gentleman came up to me who owns a six-plex of senior housing in Zering and he said that his residents had no idea that the Hurda could be used for other things such as they could, a couple of them could ride into Story City or Nevada Ames and grocery shop, et cetera. So there is that, just the general information need to get out there. The Hurda does have a designated employee. The Hurda does have a designated employee, the mobility coordinator, who works to present these presentations. I saw one of them when I went over as they were getting ready to take over Boone. And they take about a half an hour, people ask questions, but this actually shows them in different ways they can access Hurda, talks about calling in, talks about hours, answers a lot of questions because that's another issue that Hurda often runs into is that people have preconceived assumptions about what they can and can't do. Some people want door pickup at their demand and that's, you know, at the very minute, that's not going to work, but at the same time, people think that it only runs on a certain schedule, et cetera. In addition, there have been discussions as I've kind of related to you before, as I've been working with Brenda Dryer, we were looking with her job as workforce solutions coordinator to look at the needs that some of our employers have to increase workforce and some of the people will need to possibly rely upon public transportation. They don't have driver's licenses or vehicles that are not dependable or maybe they're from a one-vehicle family, there's all kinds of reasons. And yet, there's not a lot of information out there to remind them that they can use Har, Hurda possibly as an option. And of course, hopefully Bren and I will be working further with Hurda on how to see if we can really get some more ridership out there to also be able to help those employees get to employers. So there are many reasons to be out there. Hurda does have a advertising campaign, it is on paper pretty much and on the websites. Some of the people in, as we know in the rural counties, don't necessarily have access to reliable internet. There's also the situation that we have in that services like this, as Hurda increases, it's been a while since there's been any kind of promotion out there. And I feel that since we are in the 28 degree agreement with Hurda and that this is an opportunity for us to go out with them, also hand out not only Hurda information, but the Iowa Department of Transportation has a new program that's kind of a dial-a-ride, so information would be handed out there. There's also information that the Transportation Advisory Council puts together and that is the Story County Transportation Advisory Council and that information gives a great variety. I've talked about that before here at the Board Table, great variety of information about how to get around using some type of public or private transportation in the county. So I'm asking that we do partner with them, they, and to allocate $75, which is $15 per location. We're looking at holding in six locations. We're avoiding the larger communities. I believe that later on, it's appropriate then to go to the larger communities also, but I think that presentation is going to be a little different. The targeting of these in the smaller communities is really to make people aware, we know we're not going to hit everybody, especially with presentations during the day, but we also know that information is in the smaller communities. People often share that information with their relatives, their friends, their next-door neighbors. And so we feel this is a good way to go ahead and talk about one of the, what I think will be a significant avenue going forward in helping to get more transportation needs met in the county.
Yeah, thanks, Loris. So I've just got a couple of questions. One, so this is Hurda's event that Hurda is planning on putting on. Has the Executive Director of Hurda or the Board of Hurda requested that we partner with them?
Um, no. We, in putting this event together, I, obviously Julia doesn't know what's going on because I brought it up to her first, okay? And that we're putting it together, I've been working with Sarah and I made the request that we do this for Story County. Each one of the supervisors that sit on the Board of Hurda have at various times provided standing, made requests directly into the staff to have presentations come out or to have those kind of events happen, yeah.
Okay, so Julie was here earlier and my perspective, she was stunned at this letter. Not that she didn't know that Hurda was planning on doing these conversations, but had no idea that Story County was going to attempt to insert itself into that. And really, it's really concerning to me, Loris, again, we're dealing with the same thing again, it's really concerning to me that you would just run ahead, so you're a member of that Board, you're a member of the Hurda Board, that does not entitle you to make decisions for that Board. And for you to run ahead with a proposal like that, you're, you're asking us to partner with one of our agencies that we fund and that agency has not even asked us to partner with them. We don't even know if they want us involved. This request should have appropriately come through Hurda from the Executive Director and not straight from you and definitely not without the knowledge of the Executive Director. It, it is another case in point of the problems we're dealing with.
I'm, I'm in complete shock on this because I need to refer back to her staff, to Sarah. I mean, I am in.
Well, this is between, you're a Board member, Sarah works for the Executive Director. She doesn't work for the Board, she doesn't work for you, she works for the Executive Director. How does something like this come from you to us without you having the first conversation with the Executive Director or your Board Chair?
I, Julie was aware that I was talking to Sarah.
Actually, talking to and coming forward with a proposal is two different things.
Okay, the last communications I had with Sarah were a division of what Hurda would do and what we would do. Um, I, yes, the part is I did ask for $75 to go ahead, since we were, I was asking to co-partner, to go ahead and have some beverages and last snacks.
I'm not opposed to the idea.
I'm sitting here in this shock because it was my, you're talking about me going back to Julia, but Julia knew that I was going to talk to Sarah about it. When I didn't hear from Sarah right away about this, I actually followed up and told Julia that I hadn't heard from Sarah yet and Sarah said she would have, or Julia said she would have Sarah get in touch with me. So, um, I, I was, I operated in this whole thing with the understanding that Julia was aware of it and of what condoned it. So as I'm trying to listen to the words that you're saying and Julia being shocked about something, she's shocked about the partner aspect of it, is that what you're saying?
Shocked.
Because she knew what was going on.
My perspective in visiting with Hurda and Brooke about this this morning was, they were both shocked that this letter was coming before the Board of Supervisors. But Loris, again, I'm not opposed to the idea, I think it's great, I think a lot of what you mentioned in here is exactly right, but I am, I remain concerned about the process that you choose to use to get things to the Board where we're not fully vetting things. Vetting things doesn't mean just the three of us. It means that we rely on those on the ground, those with the expertise, to provide us with the information that we need so that the three of us can make a good decision. We had Julia and Brooke sitting here today. It seems to me that the appropriate way for this to happen would have been for this request to come from Julia as the Executive Director of the Hurda Board, as we see from every one of our asset-funded agencies. When they come forward generally, we have Deb Schillroth and whoever the Executive Director is of whatever entity that is, come forward and make the request. Now, that doesn't mean that none of us have been involved in that building, but it does mean it doesn't come forward from us and it sure doesn't come forward from us without the complete and total knowledge of the Executive Director and/or the Board of that entity. It's just an inappropriate way to do this.
Okay, and I'm going to come back and just say that, you know, from my perspective, I hear what you're saying, but from my perspective, I thought I had gone through the appropriate channels at Hurda because I had the discussion with Julia. She told me to talk to Sarah, I talked to Sarah, got back to Sarah, Sarah didn't get back to me. I mean, like I said, I mean, I could repeat this over and over again. So what you're saying is that she was not aware that we were going to partner and Sarah was responsible, was communicating with her Executive Director. And you're saying I should have communicated directly?
Is there a time, is there a time since you've been on the Board that we've had a request for or about one of our asset-funded agencies that the request did not come from that agency and/or asset?
This is not asset-related. Okay.
It's, it's an asset fu, there, there have been other things that we've done with different, with different partner agencies that were not directly asset-related, but what I'm asking you is, in the time you've been here, has there been another situation where the Board considered something where the Executive Director and/or Board was completely cut out of the proposal?
I cannot speak to the part about whether Boards of other agencies were cut in or out of.
I'm not worried about Boards, I'm worried about an either-or. I just feel like somebody from the agency.
But, but yes, but.
Leadership should be involved.
No, I don't think so. I was, but I, it is from my perspective, leadership was involved. The fact that she did not know that this had, about this, I need to go back to the fact you're saying I should have communicated directly with her about a proposal that we were working together on this. And I did, but apparently not in the right fashion. I think this is what I'm hearing here is because I was communicating with her and we were planning these, but you're talking about the fact that I actually was going to come forward and ask for us to partner in, in this, that that part I should have taken care of myself rather than leaving it to her staff. So I, 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 is that correct about what you're saying?
So how do we, how, how is it appropriate, Loris, in your mind, that we decide to partner with another agency for something they're doing, right? It's not that we're doing it, something that they would be responsible for, that they would be doing. We're going to partner with them without them requesting that we partner with them?
It, as I've understood this whole process here and the discussion thereof, is that there have been multiple different times with Hurda where an individual supervisor, and just for anybody who might not understand how Hurda works out here, is that the entire Board is made up of supervisors from each of the counties. So we are, all right? And so that other counties will request things also and request through their particular supervisor, all right? Those requests do not come in the, in the eight months I've sat on it, sorry, seven days, okay, okay. Those types of service requests with the mobility coordinator do not, have never come through the Board itself. They are communicated to Julia, okay? And she did know that we were looking at this. The partnership angle of this is a co, is, is to help them promote it, as I listed in there, and to make sure that the other information is available to people in the county. So once again, and I was dealing with the appropriate person that I was told to deal with by Julia, which was Sarah, and she just got married, so I'm sorry, I don't know her new last name yet, okay? So I communicated with the person, I did. So I, I can't answer your question when it comes to other agencies, whether the Board knew. I, yes, we've had directors come up and ask for type services before, but remember, I was told to deal directly with Sarah and Julia knew it. So, so I have followed what I was told the appropriate chain was for that agency, given where we were headed.
So you think that it's appropriate that Brooke and Julia come in today and I have a conversation with them and I say, hey, tell me, tell me about this partnership that we're doing, that we're talking about doing with you guys? And Julia says, what, what partnership? And I said, oh, this, you know, we've got a packet, have you seen the letter that, that's in our packet? And it was the first time she had seen it. She's the Executive Director of Hurda. Tell me how that's appropriate in your mind.
I understand how, what you are referencing to, um, I'm just, I'm just back to, once again, wondering how, if her staff is, I was told to deal with her staff and the staff was not passing on what we were discussing, including from my last email from last week. Um, I, I'm not, I guess what you're saying is I should have sent this letter to her too, or, I, I think you're saying you wanted her to come and make the request, but there was no indication from Hurda that they had any problem with this.
There was no indication from Hurda that they want this. Hurda has not taken, a, a staff member of Hurda is not, does not have the authorization unless they're given it expressly to commit Hurda anything. The Executive Director does, the Board does, but you know, word of the day, Loris, is inclusiveness. This is another example of, of your lack of inclusiveness in generating these ideas and making sure that they're fully vetted. And I think everything in here, everything that you mentioned is a really good idea, but wouldn't it be nice if the Executive Director of Hurda knew something about this before? It, I mean, it just.
Well, I agree.
It took the Board ahead of the horse.
Well, I, I agree that, yeah, it's too bad that Julia didn't know about it. The issue then becomes about, yes, I guess between the staff and I, that the expectation is, is I should make sure that.
You're a Board member of Hurda and you're a Board member of the Story County Board of Supervisors. The staff member is a staff member. Yes, it's absolutely your responsibility to make sure that the Executive Director is included. It should have come from the Executive Director, Loris. Could have been your idea, but come from the Executive Director.
Um, I'm going to go back to, um, I guess, okay. As we have other agencies that come forward and make requests, okay, as you pointed out, they've been asked that in the past, but okay. So I have learned that this is not an appropriate way to do it either.
Okay. You're going to make a motion or we're going to just let this one go until you get more information or include more people?
I would be more comfortable if this had come through Hurda, I know, in our conversations with Mr. Early, that this is something that's heartfelt and that you make points that came out at Quadrant meetings, I get that, but I'm the vice chair on the, the CICS and there's just things that if I did not know, and I say this as a relatively new supervisor too, you have assets about you to avail yourself as to proper notification or procedures, you know, I think that this is just, this passes wisdom and gets down to bedrock consensus.
As I said, I had conversations with Julia, but apparently not the right conversation to ask her to make this request and I was told to deal with the staff.
It would have, it was a little bit, I'm glad to see the notice, it would have been nice to see that she had been CC'd on by, by the time that you had come to us with this, that this was something that moved through Hurda to us. And when you bring a program director in here, you'd think that this had been something that she would have been thankful, she would have said thank you for this offer to be a partner with us in these conversations. But that now came up and I did hear what Rick asked her when he just, you know, it was just like, she had, yeah, no notice.
Okay, I.
How do you want to move forward?
I want to make a, a motion still to go ahead and that based upon.
Do we have time to bring this back to us next week?
No. Well, yeah, we do, we are, we do on the 22nd, but the advertising, all the public notices, et cetera, have to go up by this Friday to make next week's newspapers, weekly newspapers.
We're just a funder, as I understand it, for water and white snack.
Correct, yeah, and that's not the part that I'm saying to bring back, I mean, yeah, we can bring back for that. So it's the part about partnering and going back to what we would provide under a partnership agreement, which would be posting of this as on our homepage of our website, I listed on there, okay?
We can't have a partnership agreement with Hurda that the Executive Director doesn't know anything about.
Okay.
If you just want to provide the water and white snack, I guess that would be unacceptable. But, I mean, the fact that you're doing it's got to be worth something, but it's just like, this is a part of the process and the thing is you cannot ask me questions here so it doesn't get to this point that we have these kind of discussions.
I, I would ask, Loris, that you, that you talk to Julia.
I would.
And, and make, just see if, see if this works for her, first, second, third, things that you got. She's the Executive Director, she should, if we're going to do the posting and the advertisement for something that Hurda's putting on, she needs to be the one signing off on that, not somebody else. I would ask that you take this, check into it, get it back on our agenda next week with either buy-in from Julia or not. either buy-in from Julia or not, and then we move on. Can you, can we do that?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll hold that one for next week, after Laura gets more information. Next is discussion and consideration of request for proposals, manual and guideline. Oh, no, we got to do discussion and consideration of $250 registration fee for supervisor Laura Olson. I'm not going to read the rest of it. I think this is a budgeted item, I think we don't budget specifically for trips like this, but we have money in the budget to do this. I don't think this is something that needs to come before the board. Laura, I think you're well within your authority to go to something like this if you want to, but since it's on our agenda, we'll go ahead and take action on it. I would actually move that we approve the registration fee and attendance cost for supervisor Laura Olson to go to the Housing Iowa Conference in the future. Laura, just work with the staff. This should go to Alyssa, and she would tell you whether it's in the budget or not, and how to figure it out, and then the approval form comes to the chair of the board, and it's handled, doesn't need to come to us here. Marty, would you second my motion to go ahead and approve this?
Yes, I'd second that.
Further discussion? I think it's the right thing for you to do. Do you want to, you want to weigh in anymore?
No.
A right thing for you to do here, and I'm glad we've got the money for you to do it. Sanders, aye.
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
All right, that's handled now. Discussion and consideration of the RFP manual and guideline after the seven-day review. Leanne Harder, how are you today? It feels like it's been a long time since we've seen you, but we're still under the wire, under the morning wire.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Say it when I can. Well, what is before you is follow to last week's action, where you did review a draft request for proposals, RFP manual and guidelines. I did send it out to department heads and local officials following the standard seven-day review. Very, very grateful that we did that, and expressed great gratitude for, grateful gratitude. I want to stress the, stress my gratefulness. Melissa Spencer with Emergency Management, she did catch on page 28, and it's what was on the agenda that concludes this change, so it's not included right now, but under the requirements section, for whatever reason, the provider agreement, I look back at Ethan Anderson, he was involved in this discussion. We referenced a code of Iowa requirement that actually dealt with the transportation of bodies, and it really, we have no idea how it ever got in there, and it's been in the provider agreement, so that's removed. And I'm glad Melissa Delvin and with that, you know, was more aware. But that's the only moment I received, and this draft does reflect that change, striking that whole sentence.
Good.
I would recommend approval today, and I'll, with your guidance and action today, put on the internet, intranet, send an email out to management team, like, you know, what's there with Hyblane. I think it would be worthwhile to make a paper copy, and I'll just shoot out a department head and local official meeting in two weeks, I think it's two, next week.
September, probably.
It's on the papers.
September.
So I'll be glad to answer your questions.
All right, any questions for Leanne?
No, I'm glad that we went to this trouble, and it clears it up, in the sense that now we have one platform to go forward on, as opposed to having questions and having to bounce it off your office or move it somewhere else.
Well, great appreciation and even great gratefulness to Melissa Spencer for catching that on page 28. If there's nothing further, Marty, I'd take a motion.
I would move approval of our RFP manual and guidelines as presented.
Yep, and this is after seven-day review, so this becomes effective upon an act, and I would second that. Further discussion?
Aye.
Chidi?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, it passes. Thank you, Leanne. We are not seeing Mike Cox today, he is dealing with another issue this morning, and so he'll come back to us. So we've got an update on the Healthiest State Initiative Annual Walk. Noel and Rachel, good morning.
Good morning.
Still, we might just make it.
We were here a few weeks ago, and we discussed hosting the Healthiest State Initiative Walk, and we were asked to go talk to Lisa and see if it'd be possible to use some of the general funds for the employees that participate in providing the lunch. I did meet with Lisa Markley, she did think that this event met the requirements to use the general fund, so I went back to the wellness committee and asked them to use some of our funds from the wellness committee to provide a box lunch for the employees that participate.
Which probably makes more sense, because we're going to have people finishing at different times.
Exactly. Yep, yep, and we have four different locations, so we'd be able to have those box lunches ready for them, and then we'll continue with them as they left. I had an estimate for $76 per box that includes a sandwich or a wrap, fruit and veggies, and healthy desserts. We had budgeted $1,250 for this event, and at the time, we did our strategic plan for this year, we planned to do custom t-shirts for this event, but through the Healthiest State Initiative, they have t-shirts that we can purchase that are more economical. So we will save about $250 from that. I'm spending about $50 for this, so for the t-shirts, it would be $480 for a lunch, which would be $7.75.
And you budgeted $1,200, it'd be under budget. It's more, so as I recall, supervisor Olson motioned that we would spend up to like $200 or $250, so it's more than that original motion, but it wouldn't be general fund dollars, it would be added bonus. Okay.
And if, for some reason, we have $100, it'd be $8.50 for t-shirts, box lunches would be $7.75, for a total of $16.25, but we also have $500 budgeted for random wellness Wednesday events.
So you feel secure that you're going to be able to, and it'd be great, it'd be a great problem to have if we had more.
Right, absolutely, yes, and the wellness would be a very supportive.
Super, well, you guys have done a fantastic job putting this together. Looking forward to, looking forward to the walk. Questions, board?
Nothing I've watched over Noel's and Rachel's shoulder, and I think it's a really thing I've, what you see here is a lot of buy-in on how we do things to make ourselves healthy and somewhat sanitary job site, and it's good to see that we go tougher to do that, because I'm sitting here drinking way more water than I ever have in my life, and I think it makes me a better person, this is just another chapter in that story.
Spoken like a guy who used to walk 10 miles a day carrying thousands of pounds and now sitting at the desk.
Yes, that would be my story.
Laura, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, anything further for us, and do you need us to take any kind of action, or this is just an update?
Snack.
Super, thank you, guys, you're doing a great job. Public forum number two, it's an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items, really anything you want. We can't take any action at this point since it's not an agenda item, but if there's anybody who'd like to address us on any topic, please come right on up. And seeing no one move to the microphone, liaison assignments, I think it's Marty's turn to go first this week, I'm doing a bad job keeping track.
I think pass, we can do this all this morning, so let's do it.
Outstanding. Laura?
No, I don't have really-
Super, if that's the case, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All those in favor say aye, and we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.